This conference will now be recorded.
Sorry about that.
I want to compliment Susan. I don't know how she gets all of this stuff down.
We don't know.
I get a lot of, I get a lot of help. But thank you for the compliment.
Because you're very true to every word, you know, that I can recall. So my compliments to you, Susan.
Well, thank you. That's nice to hear.
Susan is, is a gift to us by any measure. Um, so I've had, there's been a motion made and seconded to accept the minutes of March 11th as written. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Um. So, um. We have two items of business for tonight, uh, both, um, one is the pre-application and the other is the Ice Pond subdivision. Um, Max, you've disappeared on us in terms of audio and video.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
I'm, I'm just making sure the stream is still going on.
Okay.
Because, um, Alex from Lincoln County News usually is watching, uh, like a guardian. And he's probably upset that I didn't have this, um, going from the very first beginning. Uh, so Ice Pond, yes. Um, you all should have received a copy and I will pull up my side of it. So after the planning board voted on this back in, um, back in January, there were some items that were not on the original, that were not on the approved documents that Lincoln County News, Lincoln County, um, Registry of Deeds needs in order to accept it. Uh, this was just some coordinates and, uh, the name of the road. Uh, there was also a lot of land that wasn't added in because the plan that was given to the planning board had, um, took it out because of the, the wetlands and the shoreline zone. So all that had to be added back in. So right now, this is just some technical items that are being added in. That this is more of a formality, similar to what happened in March with American Unagi when they asked for an amendment. Uh, it was already approved and this is just a formal signing, really. Which I know the irony right now, since there is no way you can do a signing right here. Yeah, I am, I am going to do the screen share in just a minute. Once the document opens up, I know that this is probably thrilling stuff that anyone who's watching will be seeing. Hopefully this works. Give it a moment. There we go. Gonna blow it up right here. So I don't know if there's any specific things you all want me to point out that are being added in.
We, we can't see it.
Wait.
The same thing you sent us already, Max?
Yes, I sent, I sent it in an email. Uh, waiting.
Revise the eight point, point one eight plan, even though one says final, it's really the one that says Wilderboro subdivision.
Oh, I thought that, uh, Wilderboro subdivision was the older one and, uh.
Uh, the one that has the private road name that should say Oak Point Lane, that is the final plan.
Yeah, because the, um. The, the new one, the new one is Gartsky and Dorts, is Gartley and Dorsky. And the old one was Albert Frick. That's the easiest way to tell those two apart, right?
The old one had the flood zone on it, but the new one does not have that.
I'm not, I'm not gonna do, try the screen share. It's.
Yeah, you're correct. Hmm.
Okay, and the one we're approving is the one with a signature block in the lower left-hand corner. Is that right?
Yes, you'll see that the private road is called Oak Point Lane. And the and it should have the flooding and wetlands sort of receded back. So the only blue area should be the Madomic River instead of old plans. Uh, they had some blue inland to just emphasize where the wetlands and the shoreline was going to be.
Yep. Mm-hmm. But the, but the coordinates of the lots and every, all the other details are the same, Max, correct?
Correct. This new plan, if you look on the lines for where the boundary lines are, you will see, I'm gonna zoom in on this. You'll see along the lines where the coordinates for the new boundary lines are, uh, giving some, uh, like where the points are gonna be for, uh, boundary pins. And, uh, let me see, uh. Yeah. It's just some, you got coordinates.
It's much more a, a deed type of a document than the first one was.
Yeah, and actually, if you print them out there exactly to scale, and the, uh, the boundary lines overlay really well. So in addition to the, the numbers matching up, if I can see that small.
Well, what happens to, I'm just curious, um, the old one with the flood zone said the total land area was eight point one eight. And these lots add up to seven point eight. So, um, what happens? And I guess the rest is the road, but that's not a town road. So what happens with that land as far as? I'm curious.
That point three eight that's missing?
What?
That point three eight that's missing? Is that what you're asking?
More than, is it point three? Yeah. Yep.
So you're talking about? Uh, yeah, and I was part of the reason why the Registry of Deeds couldn't accept it. Because without the boundaries, uh, to give the exact coordinates and without, uh, an engineer like Gartley and Dorsky giving a certification on it, it was hard for them to accept it because that point three eight could have been anything, really. So this is actually the seven point eight acres that you're seeing that, those are the figures that it should have been originally.
Hmm.
Okay, but what happens to all the road land? That just, that doesn't exist?
Road land, are you talking about the, the actual private road?
Yeah, and the cul-de-sac, whatever. That, I mean, I'm, I'm just curious. What happens to that?
It's a private road, so it's, whatever the deed says is pretty much what's happening to it.
I just wonder.
It's similar to Ice, it's similar to the Ice Pond Road.
Yeah, okay.
So thank you for your association, Barbara. That's my, that would be my guess.
Yeah. So the, um, the disappointment to me is, um, lot two, I just wish we had been able, I, is it legal to have a, a test pit in a septic system that close to a flood zone? I mean, sure, it's not gonna be all the time, but, um, and he has an alternate location, but it's, I wish, kinda wish we'd been able to encourage pushing it off away from the water, but.
Well, everything that's on there is concept. It's always been concepts. Um, as long as it's at least two hundred and fifty feet, I believe is, or no, a hundred. Um, it's, it is still gonna have to go through the, um, usual process. So the local plumbing inspector who's Stan Waltz, he's gonna be reviewing those documents when eventually gets to them.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, Johnny.
I'm just curious, and it's nothing in particular, but from this first map that I'm looking at and the second map, you may go, you may have already explained this, but why is there such a discrepancy? What actually happened between the first engineers or surveyors and the second set? It just, it seems odd.
I'm sorry, Johnny. So the question is, what's the difference between the two? Why are there so many differences?
Yeah, why is it so different and what, and how, how could it be that different? What happened between the first draft and the second draft?
One was done by, let me pull it up. One was done by an environmental consultant and one was done by an engineer.
So they're looking at this through a different lens or is it, it just, just perplexing to me?
Well, what's interesting to me is that the, the lot, if I'm doing, doing this overlay right and looking at it, the lot lines are actually in the same places. The calculated numbers for the amount of area is slightly different.
Right.
The areas are different. And that, that, that would depend on how you're gonna calculate relative to the shoreline, which is not easy to.
Yep.
So I would, I, um, you know, which is, I think, why it makes sense that they went with the engineering firm to do these calculations and prepare this. Because all the other things in the, in the overlay looks right and the locations of all of the, of the houses and the, I believe the septics are in the same position. They're all meet the one hundred foot setback originally approved. So, um, the actual layout looks to be exactly what we originally approved, which is what they're telling us it is. Does that sound right, Max?
Uh, yes. So, and that's, again, one of the reasons why the Registry of Deeds wanted an engineer to do this, just because there was a lot of things that were being taken out or added in that weren't, weren't what they're used to. And so they wanted that, that conformity, that predictable measure.
Yep. Well, it also has the, it has a section for the Registry of Deeds to acknowledge the receipt.
Well, I'm comfortable with it.
As am I. Although I think the lesson learned from this is we wanna make sure that if somebody else comes in front of us with a subdivision like this, that it has all these things that the state's looking for the first time around.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Well, there was also a bit of a miscommunication between myself and the developer. When I mentioned that this was going to be it, he thought that meant that there was gonna be another meeting afterwards. I don't know how, but he did. So when, when there was the vote, he, he took that and just went to the Registry of Deeds without going through the just, without realizing.
Move to a second. Yeah, I just had one thought, final thought. So when you say an engineer did it and an environmental service did it, is there a specific set way that you do calculate, say, these flood zones? Does everybody, does every discipline do it the same way? Or can that lend itself to what we have here?
I'm not sure how they calculate it, but the other part of it was that the environmental consultant who did the original map also retired recently. So.
Okay.
They couldn't do it.
Okay.
And the other part is that, um, I spoke with the engineer for, from Gartley and Dorsky who did this map. And he said that when he was told that he, you know, had to make some updates, he said, well, if I'm doing it, I, I'm doing it from scratch. I'm not gonna just take someone's work and then put numbers on it. I wanna do my own calculation. So it could have been one of those as well.
Hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? I have a motion to approve the Ice Pond subdivision amendment.
So if I can just approve, fuck, Max.
Quickly just jump in, it'll be done.
Wait a second. Wait a second, I just, Jim, I believe, said, made the motion, but I didn't, was there a second yet? No, okay, Max. Oh, John, Johnny did. Okay. So motion's been made and seconded. Max, you had a comment?
I was just gonna say with, um, all the voting that's gonna happen, uh, what I would prefer is if whoever is on screen, they just raise their hand if they say aye. And we'll go through, well, Johnny's the only one who's on the, the phone, so he'll just say aye when the time comes.
Perfect. And then how, and then what does Susan do?
Susan just listens. I'm supposed to be able to see this on the screen, but I can't bring it up.
Okay, we'll tell Susan, we'll, we'll tell, Susan will tell you what the visual vote was from the people who are visual.
Okay, thank you.
So.
Yeah, when all that happens, Scott, just repeat who, what the ayes and ayes.
Yeah, I'll take care of it. Okay. So motion's been made and seconded, uh, to approve the Ice Pond subdivision amendment. Um, all those in favor, please signal appropriately. Johnny?
Aye.
All, uh, all opposed, since that was everyone. Um, it's been, it was a unanimous vote, Susan.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item of business is, uh, 51 Orff's Corner Road. So, uh, I see we have Mike, uh, Curly and.
Elena Bailey.
Elena Bailey. Okay, please, so you, if, uh, we, uh, will now give you the floor to, uh, introduce this to us, the pre-application. Um, so you are welcome to proceed. Hello, welcome.
Hi, um, what we'd like to do is, um, we have the thirty-two acres, oh, thirty, a little bit thirty-one acres. And start out with the, um, private camping. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a, like a regular campground. It would be for more private events. Um, limited, limited number of people, um, and probably, probably host four, five or six of them a year. Um, would have, uh, one common, common area for camping for, uh, like a tent field type thing. And then some wooded areas for people to camp in.
As well as a, a bath house eventually and, um, the appropriate number of tables and campfire places.
So that would be like phase one. Um, and we wanted to, oh, we're gonna have turned into a residence. We're gonna have to build a house up on the top of the hill, which will be up in this area. And then, um, in the back more, we're, we would like to do a hot tub and sauna, um, rental place. Where not, where people would go up for the evening, um, to go into a hot tub or a sauna. We'd have one community, large hot tub and probably we'll start out with one sauna and then add more saunas afterwards.
Hi, Mike, could I interrupt you right there real quick?
Yes.
Uh, Johnny Cogna, I, listen, I love the concept. I'm looking at the map and I would join that, but I was just wondering. I was just wondering, looking a little bit ahead, you know, and I, I'm a respiratory therapist. We all know about the COVID. Does the current pandemic change in any way the, the rollout that you would have? Or would you have a soft opening? Or have you figured that into your business plan at this point? Or are you just kinda like everybody?
Hoping that COVID is completely over by now because.
By then.
Yeah, well, yeah, by the time we actually open it up. I mean, this, this is like maybe at least five years to start.
Well, for the, for the hot tub and sauna, um, or maybe sooner than that. But yeah, probably about five years. But the camping, we wanted to do, um, hopefully next, next year. Um, but get things ready this year.
Your timeline is, I just wanted to get an idea of your timeline. So I guess you, you're on top of it.
Can I ask? Yeah, we, we would not be doing anything while anything like COVID was going on.
Okay, all right. No, I, that's, yeah, that's very prudent, of course.
So I have two questions.
Yes, Barbara.
So you're talking about tents or campers is, um, is the first question. And the second question is, what's the purple line on the, um, oh, Google map drawing that we, we were sent?
Well, that you sent, um.
It's on the, um.
I'm trying to remember which line that was. Does it run along the property line?
Um, it looks like it's towards town and along the river. Is that an old road?
Oh, no, that one, I believe, was, is the, uh, it's on this plan.
Oh, the snowmobile?
Yeah, the snowmobile trail.
What, what kind of trail is it?
Snowmobile trail. It's.
Take a camper down there and, um, park down there with a camper or?
Um, we probably wouldn't do any campers down there. If we did any campers at all, it would be up in, up in this area. It'd be well away from, yeah, only the first, uh, half of the property.
So you aren't allowed for that type of traffic, the big, big vehicles coming through?
Yeah, no, there wouldn't be that many that we'd be able to allow.
Yeah, we'd only allow a couple of pop-up campers. Uh, if they also be all tents. Would restrict the number.
And then I see you've got a, um, additional area that you wanna clear, um, with the brown line there.
Oh, yeah.
Um, how many, how big an area is that? I mean, how, is that like two acres or, I, I actually?
I would say, I'm guessing it'd probably be over two acres.
Yeah, because this area was like one acre that.
Yeah, that they gave us from there. Yeah, I would, I would say probably, I'd say it's probably about three acres, give or take.
And the reason for that, Mike, is the function for it?
Yeah, to open that up for field camping. And you'll have like a, like a communal, um, fire pit.
On fire area.
I would think you would want to keep, um, some privacy from your neighbor. I'm just, it's a little hard to.
Oh, yeah. There's a tree line right here that we would not get rid of because it's all apples.
And along here, there's all trees and the only neighbor, you can't see it, but their cottage is about down here somewhere.
Yep. Yeah, when I, we're, we're looking at something different than what you're looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
We were sent the Google map thing. And then if you look at a, a, you know, Schemobile road and then also additional clearing, by the time all said and done, that'll be pretty close to the lot line. So we would be probably very concerned about that, just to, um, keep, keep that in mind is all.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we, um, yeah, I know about, um, setbacks and all that. So we're gonna be well, well outside the setbacks at anything we do.
Like, like.
We wanna have.
Also noise going to your neighbors. I mean, it looks like.
Yeah, we want, yeah, we wanna have a lot of buffer, keep a lot of trees to buffer it.
Okay, so the distance between the, the edge of the cleared area and the boundary would be something you would, you should make sure to have specified in what.
Yeah, okay.
And like.
I probably.
Hold on a little bit. Everybody's trying to talk at once still. And I wanna, and, and I actually wanna go back to you, Mike, because you were, you were giving an overview and then we started in with questions and it wasn't, we're done. So, um, would you, do you have any other further things that you wanted to add as part of your presentation?
Um, I think we covered it. Um.
One thing I wanna ask, actually, uh, we actually just got these plans from the surveyor today. And this was like a long, narrow lot with these areas chopped off. So we have to have the driveway going up right here. And the surveyor put wetlands right there. So I'm wondering.
Um, he said he's gonna relook at them because.
We, we don't think it's actually wetlands. But if he does insist, what additional things would we have to do? Or is that part of the driveway permit process?
Oh.
Wait, wait, give, Max, have you looked at the map, the town map?
Yep, just looked at it. There, I don't see anything except a shore, I see a shoreline. Let me get it.
Yep, that we can agree on.
Yeah. Yeah, and I looked at the soils maps from the USDA, um, and there was no wetland soils anywhere in that area. So I know there's no wetland soils there. Um, it, it wa, it is a little mushy in that area, but also drops ten feet between here and the culvert area.
So the only, the only shoreline that I have on site is not gonna come up well to everyone, but, um, in the back of the property on your maps, it's just that three hundred and fifty feet from the main, oops, from the main, uh, stream that goes all the way down from Madomic Pond to River. That's the only shoreline that I have.
Okay.
Okay. Mike, what did you mean by culvert? Where, where's the culvert?
There's a culvert right here.
Yeah.
So that's probably there for a reason, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they actually, they actually use this as a drive to get up into this par, parcel up here. They, um, have apple orchards and nut trees and grapes and all that that they take, that they were taking care of.
And they've been haying it.
Yeah, they've been haying it for years. So, um, that's why the culvert was put there, so they could, um,
Well, probably water's running under there. So it may be a sand thing, but, um, that's probably what the guy was mentioning.
Yeah, and, and I, I think a lot of it was snow melt when he did it, because he just finished a survey a few weeks ago. Well, a couple, not even that, I don't think. And there is.
Yep.
Along, along this side of the boundary on the other property back here, there is a ditch, a ditch line that this culvert feeds into.
So you might wanna look at where your parking is located. It, you know, you may find you need to move it back a little bit or something.
Yeah.
Even move it off your neighbor's rear property line.
Oh, move, move the culvert, you said?
No, move the parking.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have the driveway up here and any park we have, we're gonna have down in this, oh, in this area. And up and, up around to there.
Yeah, we're, uh, I'm not, I'm clear what our, our regs are about, um, screening parking. And I don't really know, um, I mean, that's pretty far from the future house and stuff. So I'm not really sure what you're thinking. I guess the tents, people would leave their car there and then go into the woods?
Yeah, the driveway will come up. I figured it's about nine hundred feet, um, from the road up to the area where the house is gonna be in the garage. And the parking for the tenters will be down this area.
Okay.
And we're gonna put fencing along, um, the face, the roadside, um, and those trees here now. So we probably won't do anything for, for a buffer there for, for sight to block the cars.
Well, you might need to do something on two edges of that parking, at least the way it looks from what I can see right now. Just something to think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Jim, you had a question before that was?
Yep, and, and the two of them are kind of related. Scott, thank you. Um, Mike, what we're really saying about the parking and also about the southern boundary, doesn't have to do with setback. It has to do with the neighbor's view and, and the need to screen if they say they'd like to have it screened.
Yeah, that's.
The planning board in the past has sided with the, um, with the abutters in terms of providing adequate screening for, for new developments.
Yeah, yeah, I was the chairman of my planning board for years and we did the same exact thing. Um, always try to appease the neighbors.
Speaking of which, have you had any reaction from them?
Uh, no, um, the only reaction we had was somebody had been told that we were going to subdivide it and break it up into about ten lots. So we corrected them on that and they loved the idea of what we're gonna do with it.
And how do you plan to get across the brook from place to place?
Um, the only, the only brook is back here. We're not, we're not gonna do any camping and be out, be on this side of the brook. That really won't be up on this side.
Oh.
So we wouldn't have to cross.
The drawing we have shows three.
That was, that was what we're thinking of doing. Um, and we still might, um, but depends, depends on how, how adequate we can get to there. But if we did, it would only be people walking. In fact, you can, you can skip across the, the brook. They'd only have to carry their, um, their tending gear across the brook.
So I can just jump in right now because I did find something on a, uh, in our, in the land use ordinance, there's a requirement that no campsite shall be located within the hundred-year flood plain.
Okay.
So I think that's why you really need to check the wetland, because if I'm looking at the map, at this FEMA map, right, that brook that you have cutting across. that brook that you have cutting across is something that could in fact be a, a floodplain.
Oh, it didn't have you within 100 feet? Can't be within 100 feet, right?
Uh, it just says no campsite shall be located within the 100-year floodplain.
Okay.
So perhaps you might want to take an extra measure and have it a bit further away from it. It doesn't have to be 100 feet, but you should.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll find out where, where the floodplain is then.
Yeah, I'll send you a map.
Okay. All right, thanks.
So when you say that there's gonna be five or four or five or six events a year, um, uh, is this like wedding kind of things and you're gonna rent a tent or what?
No, um, more like, uh, like yoga retreat, like my, uh, my fiancee is a belly dancer. And she went to a belly dance retreat where it was a concept like this, where they had a communal area with a fire and they had, uh, campsites. And it would go from like Thursday to Sunday. So we do.
Well, where were they belly dancing? In a buil- in a building of some sort?
Um, they used a, a tent. So we, we, we probably have something like that. Or maybe, um, build some kind of a pladium down in that area where the common area would be. We haven't decided exactly how we're gonna do that yet. It might just be like a, um, a multi-posted, um, canopy-covered, um, pladium type thing. And not walled at all, but that's still in transit.
What do you mean? Does that mean like a covered, like a kiosk kind of thing or?
Yeah.
Uh, what do you call them? Like a gazebo? Is that what you mean?
Giant, like a giant gazebo.
Okay.
Um. So at, in the beginning, you mentioned, you, it sounded like you said something about phase one and then I didn't really hear, I'm not clear what phase two is.
There'd be the hot tub and sauna.
Okay, that's phase two.
Yeah. And that's probably nothing we would do until, uh, we actually build the house up there.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, so the phase two, the hot tub and the rental, it's really like a separate business that runs on its own calendar in a way, you know, it could be a year-round thing, whereas this is, you know, a four, six-month-a-year thing.
Right, yeah.
So it's kind of a couple of different, you know, a couple of different, um, um, things going on. I mean, a lot of different things going on.
Yeah.
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 So I've also, I also sent everyone in this chat, uh, a link to, and an attachment for the map that I was just talking about.
Okay.
Should see it in your emails.
Okay.
So, um.
Mike, you, but Mike, you've mentioned a few times building the, the house. Is this gonna be your residence?
Yeah, yeah, it's our retirement plans.
Yeah.
So we're looking at retiring, um, probably in about seven years, but building the house in about five and, um, and before then, um, we're gonna, we want to bring a, um, a travel trailer up there on the property for us to, um, stay in whenever we go up on weekends or, or, um, maybe a week or two during the summer to work, to work on all this stuff we want to do for the camping and property.
So when the campers are there using the place, will you as owners be on the property?
Yes. Yeah.
So you're gonna camp as well in the meantime or?
Yeah, yeah, we, we're gonna build a garage with a, uh, living quarters in it. Um, but it ended up being a lot more expensive than we had planned on, so we're gonna, instead, um, we bought a camper trailer that we're gonna put up there and sleep and stay in there whenever we go up. On, like, like, we'll go up Memorial Day weekend with it, um, a week or two during the summer. And then, um, a couple of times during, during, each month for a long weekend.
So. So right now, Mike, there's no septic or well on the property?
No, I, we have a septic design. Um, I'm gonna be talking to somebody to have the septic installed. Um, and I'm talking to a well company. I had, had plans to go up there, um, for the last put-in board meeting that we're gonna be on. But, um, we, I, we could, we lost our hotel because of the, uh, the Corona, so. Uh, haven't met with the well company yet. And we're gonna try to do that. Uh, we're gonna go up there over Memorial Day weekend. Uh, and again, I think it's two weeks after that for a week. So during that week, we're gonna have the well company go up.
Okay, so you have a lot of figuring to do. If you've got a septic design, it's gonna be for your house and then it has to be for some unknown number of people, unless you're planning on running this on porta potties, um.
We might start out with porta potties.
Yeah.
And then, um, and then we want to have a bath house built with, with a septic.
Okay.
So they cut, um, the, uh, that snowmobile trail, I'm assuming that that's connected to a lot, you know, a major network of trail? It's not just.
Yeah. No, right, it, it, uh, it runs across the neighbors, um, through ours and it comes across this way and goes to the next lot over. And I'm not sure the full route of it, but it's, um, it's, it's fairly big one. And the, uh, snowmobile, um, association, um, takes care of it. And it's only, it's only supposed to be used during the winter time for snowmobiles. And obviously, we won't be camping in the winter time, so there'd be no conflict with the, uh, snowmobile trail.
Okay.
And we'd utilize that trail, um, like I said, to, uh, anything we need to do in the back part with any vehicle or anything like that, but.
Yeah.
Uh, no RVs back there or anything like that.
Yeah, there are snowmobile trail maps that are available at the town office. You can also contact Snowmobile Trail, uh, the Snowmobile, so the Waldaborough Snowcrawlers directly. Uh, I'm trying to, uh, pull up the map there. That right there where they are.
Ah.
That finger is, and then obviously the red line is just where they connect to.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Johnny, go ahead.
I just, I'm just looking at the map and, um, you know that cleared area, that, that again, I know we talked about, that's, that's a fairly large area, but is there any ordinance or any regulations? Can you just, you just go in and just cut all those trees down as you will? Then what do you do with them?
Um, that depends on the use. Uh, if they're just going to chop it down, they're not doing any timber harvesting, then should be fine as long as it's not, again, that's why they should need to check the wetlands, make sure there's, out of thermal pool or any important environmental, uh, habitat they're disrupting. I would also recommend they contact the Department of Agriculture and Forestry and Conservation just to be safe.
Okay.
Isn't there a limit about, I, I, isn't there a limit about the number of acres you can clear at once? Even, I think it's a two acre limit.
Yeah.
I, I don't.
Contact.
Okay.
Locally, we don't have, I don't believe we have something locally, but there is probably something statewide.
Okay.
So it looks to me, I mean, this is rural, right, uh, Max? Why is this zoned?
I know, this is downtown, actually.
This is downtown? Oh, come on. What is it? Is it Russell County?
It's rural.
It is rural, okay.
It is rural and the, the shoreline zone near the water that is limited residential.
So our main issues, um, to just, I can summarize, it's gonna be, um, screening everything from your neighbors, both for visual and for sound. If you have big activities, you know, act, you know, people get rowdy when they're vacationing with their buddies, you know?
Yeah.
So, um, it's gonna be sound, um, trash, um, visual, um, and, um, protecting the waters are gonna all be our main, our, our, um, issues.
Okay.
But otherwise, it doesn't seem like there's, you know, and of course, it's a question of scale. It will make a big.
I think that's, in, in my view, I think that's the biggest, you know, for example, it, you know, this, the, the brook that you've got there, even though you said you could step over it, if you were to end up with a lot of camp, people camping on the other side, that might be an issue that is worth checking into just to understand what, uh, what any limits or requirements would be because of that brook.
Yeah.
Um, and I guess that overall is, goes back to what, I think what you were saying, Barbara, just now, is I, you, you've talked about, um, you know, restricting the number of campers and how many events you're gonna have per year. Um, and you know, then having a bath house and campfires and things that, um, it would be very helpful. I think, uh, our experience, my experience in going through these kinds of things with applicants is that, um, whatever they, whatever you specify to us, you know, when we end up approving a package and an understanding, we have an understanding of what your intent is in terms of, of people and, and what you, what you actually plan to do. And then that becomes, that becomes what we've approved. And if you decide you want to go beyond that, you have to come back to us or if you find out that it needs to work differently. So, um, I'd encourage you to be, I think we need to be as specific as possible in understanding, we're gonna need to understand exactly what is in your plan and that's gonna be part of what we approve. So I think.
Yeah.
Um, that's gonna be the, a big variable for us. Is that sort of what you were saying there, Barbara? Whoa. Okay.
Scott?
Well, yep.
Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Uh, what about the, the overall timing of it? I remember in some of the other things we've, we've approved, there was a two-year time limit for implementation. How does that, would that work here with a, it sounds like a multi-year plan to implement? Just, just a question.
Yeah, well, that's kind, that's kind of why I said like two different phases. Like the first time we come in would be for the camping and the, if we do the, the gazebo pladium thing and, um, the bath, in the bath houses.
Then we come back for this part two.
Yeah, we'll come back later on for that. But we, I just say, we figured that we'd do the whole thing as a conceptual now, so you know what we're looking to do
Sure.
from here on out.
And if you ran, ran screaming, then we'd know it wouldn't be a good idea to do that.
Well, it's very helpful to have an understanding of that, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's certainly true. So, um, any other, um, so I think Barbara summarized pretty well, I think, the, the.
I, I have one other question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is, are you planning on having any, um, like boat launching at the river there?
Oh, actually, um, if we did anything, we'd just have, we have a canoe, um, for our own use. That's one thing that we'd probably do is put the canoe in the water back there. Um, oh, I don't know if, if docks are allowed to be put in or a floating dock or something that, like, that, like a floating raft type thing I could drop in, um,
During the season.
during the season and then pull back out if those are allowed.
Um, shoreline zone, I believe that is.
Also, what's the river like there? Is it?
Yeah, what's the width, how wide is the river there?
It's.
It's pretty wide, I would say.
30 feet?
Oh, it looks like it's, it's over 100 feet across.
Really? Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, any temporary or seasonal pier, stocks, wharf, bridges or other structure? Wait. No. Yes, any, any temporary use, that would be a CEO approval.
Okay.
Okay. But it should be part of the plan that you present.
Okay, yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Just, just say that it's something that you want to do and want to do as well, but you're gonna go to Stan Walts, the co-enforcement officer, to, um, address that issue.
Okay.
Um, I think the, uh, the setback issues and, and, uh, screening that Barbara mentioned for the neighbors, uh, checking on the, on the wetlands and for the floodplain plus, um, any issues that might be related to crossing the brook. Um, then, uh, you know, water and septic you're planning for later, but I, but, um, that may be something worth thinking, you know, making sure that that's gonna be viable going into the plan.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna have all that stuff on the plan initially.
Yeah, and getting across the, and the culvert, the access road relative to wetlands and the culvert to making sure that that's, um, is something that's, that's, uh, will pass muster.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, um, in terms of the, the overall plan for uh, events, size of events, number of events, uh, number of campers, um, those kinds of things. Um, well, worth kind of scoping for the.
Yeah.
Oh, um, did you mention the crush gravel for the driveway?
I was, I was just going to.
Okay.
So one thing we're considering, since this driveway is gonna have to be like all this, pavement, I don't think would be very good for the environment or our pocketbooks. So we're hoping to do crush gravel.
Yeah, like a farm road.
Yeah.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah. That's typical.
Okay.
Great.
I don't think there's any requirements for that that I remember for materials for, for driveway.
Okay.
But that's something I can talk with John Daigle, who, um, he deals with driveway permitting, right? I'll, I'll confirm that with him.
All right.
Yeah, can he, can he do, uh, relative to the culvert and the, well, the wetlands is a separate issue in that area where the driveway goes through, but, um, would, would he be somebody to get involved at all in that, Max?
The culvert and wetlands?
Yeah.
Uh, for the driveway, yes. Uh, I don't know if he has time to, we're not talking about the back area, right?
No, right, this is just the front side, right.
Yeah, if we're just talking about the driveway, then yeah, he can probably give some next piece on that.
Great, okay.
I just.
Anything else on this? Any other questions or comments?
Um, the other question, other question I have for you is, um, the, I have, do I have an application, driveway application? Can I scan that after I do it and, and email it or mail it?
Just, you can just send it to me.
Okay. It's an email or?
Email's fine.
Okay.
Scott?
Yes.
I, I don't really have a question. I just have a comment, um, to Mike and Elena. Uh, a project like this, I think is, uh, uh, it's excellent. It's, this is the type of thing the town of Waldaborough needs and I, I, I wish you, uh, luck. I would just caution to, as we've been talking, to just get all those particulars down. So once you know what it is that you want to do, when it comes before us, we can.
Yeah.
We can get you going and I, I, but I, again, I, the concept and that's the type of thing, again, I think Waldaborough needs more of, so.
All right.
Throw that in.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, and we want to be good neighbors to the neighbors, so we don't want to do anything, yeah, in the environment. So nothing we want to do, um, to hurt any of that, so. We definitely do what we need to do.
Excellent.
Anything else for Mike and Elena? There's nothing, nothing to vote on because it's not a, not an official application, so, um, anything else, Max?
Hey, oh, actually, I did get a question. Um, are you, are people gonna be swimming in the?
No, no. Is it swimming? Is this, I mean, I don't know what the, we, we went up there a few times.
Didn't seem swim.
Didn't really seem swimable, yeah. It seemed, I don't know what the, what the bottom is like. I'm imagining it's.
Lucky, the way to find it.
Yeah, uh, no, thanks.
Yeah.
A diving board up there.
Yeah, it's, it's very, very slow moving, if moving at all. It didn't seem to be moving that much. Hardly, hardly any current.
Do swimming, well, someday put in a, a big swimming pool, but not swimming in the river.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and eventually that was, actually, that was gonna be part of the hot tub and sauna deal was, um, uh, a pool, a heated pool. So.
Yeah, no, that was the one question I was asked and I figured it wasn't gonna go anywhere.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's good to put these things out. No, it's good to put these things out.
Okay.
Alright.
Well, thank you very much for coming. We have a few other minor
Housekeeping.
items to do, but.
Alright.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we'll be in touch when we're um, getting ready for the actual proposal, so.
Thank you.
Good luck. Alright, thanks.
Feel like you.
Thank you. Nate.
Bye. Give him a second.
Yep. So.
There we go.
Perfect. Do have uh, very little else, but that said, uh, is there any, is there any other new business or anything? That's come up, Max, since you put out the agenda?
Um, new business? No. I don't believe so.
Okay.
I do wanna ask uh, for signing Ice Pond Roads, the Ice Pond subdivision amendments. Do people want me to start driving around tonight to get the signatures, or you want me to wait until tomorrow to come around and do it in the afternoon?
On tonight?
I'm still at the town office.
God bless you, Max. I'm going directly, I am going directly to five.
What?
Pick up a pizza for me?
I, I'm also willing to come in and, you know, like, I don't know what's going on at the office, but I could meet you there sometime, you could bring in, we could sign there, but um, if you're gonna be driving around, I'm around tomorrow, so um.
Taxes are due Friday, aren't they? Real estate taxes?
Well, I believe the town office here is closed on Friday now.
Oh.
That's actually the other part of it. Um, my hours are now Mondays, Tues, my days here are now Mondays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, so.
What hours?
Uh, eight thirty, well, nine to five, pretty much.
In the town office is Monday through Thursday?
Monday? Wa- wait, hold on, are you asking about the town office or me?
Town office.
Town office is eight thirty to, hold on, should be on Facebook, I think. Um, but I believe it's eight thirty to four thirty, Monday through Fri, Monday through Thursday. Yes, Sarah?
Um, since you're working Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday, does that, is that why you would like to come by tonight?
Um, I will be coming in, I will be coming in tomorrow anyways, 'cause I'm also gonna be doing election clerk work, because apparently I don't have enough on my plate, and.
Well, thank you for, thank you for, the elections are important, so we appreciate your, any effort that you might make on that, on that subject.
So that's why I'm offering, I can either drive tonight while I'm still in town, and I'm not too out of it yet, or I can come tomorrow, when I'm gonna have to come into town anyways. I can come in in the afternoon, I can come in in the morning, depends what's convenient for people.
I'm fine with tonight, if you want. Night, awesome. Just do it.
I have my usual route, don't worry.
You can come tonight, Max, I'll be here if you want.
Okay. So I'll just go around tonight, have you all sign the four uh, maps. Um, one copy will be for us, one copy will be for uh, Mr. Douglas, and then two will go to the registry of deeds.
Also, we're in the driveway.
If you're going to Barbara's, you can come by and talk and see if I come out.
That's what I usually do.
If it's tomorrow.
Come all the way down the road, you can get me.
I, if people want me to start driving tonight, I'll, I do not mind. It's thirty minutes, it's alright, don't worry. I'm fast.
This is a funny program. Uh, does anybody else use Zoom instead? 'Cause everybody's eyes are looking down. Um, is it, anybody else?
The barber, what I've found? Is my older computer, and maybe you've got one too, the camera is up here on top.
Yeah.
Computers have it down on the bottom.
Yeah.
And, and those tend to give you a great, so, so a look like this, because looking up at your face.
Yeah.
Scott, on your, on your cam, on your computer, where's, is the camera on the top of the screen or the bottom?
Mine? Mine's at the to, mine's at the top.
But he probably has an angle, but yeah.
That could be, yeah.
Mine's at the top, it's pretty square on. Where's yours, Max? You're the other one that looks sort of, well, actually, you do, Jim, but um, there.
But I have my, but I have my laptop like.
Far away from. Yeah, you're, you're pretty far back, that helps a lot, see? I'm, I'm far back now, it looks, looks more normal.
This is some very.
Table.
Uh, and yeah, and yeah, actually, yeah, I'll just bring this up now. I was telling Scott this before the meeting, but uh, we will be using Zoom next time if we do have another meeting. Uh, because a lot more people are using Zoom and uh, apparently there were some issues with, I mean, tonight was an example, there were some issues with GoToMeeting that I kinda wished didn't happen, uh, so.
Well, we have it all down now, so.
Yeah. Whatever.
Whatever, whatever you'd like to do. So any, um, any uh, comments from planning board members?
Other than, I think it was well done.
Yeah, thanks, Max, for setting it up. I think it went okay. Um, um, Susan, you still with us?
I am with you, yes.
Great. Well, we appreciate your help and um, thanks, Jo, and Johnny not having, and Susan not having visuals makes it I'm sure more difficult. Um, I know what that's like, long conference calls, but um, and thanks, Max. Um, if there are no other comments.
Well, I'm just quickly checking to, so I don't believe I have any, so I don't have any applicants at this time, and I believe next week. Yeah, so I don't have any applicants at this time. Next week I will make sure to bring up if we don't have any. I assume we will cancel the meeting if we don't have any.
Okay.
Um, if we, now, if we do get an applicant, are people, do people want to do, continue doing this, or what will be Zoom, or do people want to meet here at the town office, where some can still participate remotely?
I think the only reason we might need to look uh, come to the town office that I can see is if we, if there are um, uh, yeah, maps, a big presentation or something that we need to. It's a little hard to um, uh, be talking about a different visual than the um, Mike and his partner had tonight.
If it's all the pre-application, we wanna keep doing this, but if it's an actual a board approval application, we'll hold it here? Is that what I'm getting?
No, I think, I think.
Still too early to know.
Yeah, because I, to me, logistically, I would think it would be, I would think it may be more awkward to try to do some people at the town office and some people remotely. Um, but, and I'm perfectly comfortable. I, I think the remotely works fine, so unless it's like a map that we can't really see, but in the past, you've nailed us physical copies of the maps and things like that, so um, I'm not sure I wanna be at the town hall over a conference table as, in a circle pouring over a map together either, so as much as, as much as I love you guys, I don't wanna be that.
And I'm sure I don't wanna be, so I'm all for doing it this way.
Yeah, I think for now, that's the best.
We're all older than you, Max.
That's why I'm asking.
And for a reason.
Alright. Alright, so if we're doing a meeting, it's gonna be another video conference.
Yep.
Then if that's the case, I have nothing else.
I have a question, please.
Yes.
Can somebody tell me Mike's partner's name to spell it, please?
I believe it was A-I-L-I-N-A.
A-I-L what?
I-N-A.
I-N-A.
And her last name is Bailey, I think.
I can just email.
Yeah, I actually saw A-L-A-I-N-A, I thought it was Atlanta.
Oh, okay, I spoke.
A-L-I-N-A, that's the first name, how about the surname?
I, I'll just email Mike, how about that, just.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna email me.
I, I am emailing him right now.
I believe it was Bailey, I believe she said Bailey, but since I didn't spell her first name right, I wouldn't trust that.
Assuming, assuming I remember correctly.
Okay, I'm hungry, guys, can we?
Okay, back to staying a little bit.
Well, I need a motion to adjourn, Barbara.
I make motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? There's a second from Jim. There being no debate on this issue. I wanna thank everybody, and everybody stay safe and well, please. And uh, thanks, Max and Susan, and uh, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
To vote on the adjourning. All those in favor of adjourning, signal appropriately. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.